All right, Mayor, thank you so much for making time for me today. I typically do my recap of what happens at the London City Council in a video that I do at my home, and I did this time too, but the problem is, that was a long meeting, lot of yelling, lot of hooping and hollering, and so I feel like that London residents need a clear picture of the business that was actually conducted during the meeting. So you and I have a copy of the agenda, and we're going to try to go through this pretty quick. We don't want to put them through another hour and a half, and I tend to get long-winded, so I'm glad you're here and you've agreed to do this so that we can break it down. So we'll skip through the most of it. City Clerk started us off with an opening prayer after some things were done and said, but right to the first item that was actually business on the agenda was the minutes.
Yeah, you know, the, so the frustrating part for us is council, if you look back in the history of the videos that we go into our meetings, they're constantly saying they want stuff so many days prior, so many days prior, so many days. So we've tried to always honor that, but then this year, they come in with these, you know, agendas none of us have seen.
Right.
Documents none of us have seen, and we are responsible. After they approve this stuff, my office is responsible for these documents. How valid are they? Who wrote them? You know, we have an ordinance that they had last night, and you're going to get into this, but generally, the ordinance will say who prepared this. Every document Larry Bryson has ever prepared, it will say that, it's stated on it. We have a document, they're saying an attorney prepared, but there's no attorney's names on it. So, but the concern of this agenda is it was prompted on us when we start the agenda. Now, they've done this several times this year. That's not transparency to the public, so there's the biggest. We went through this impeachment, we're going through this impeachment, they talk and holler transparency, but then they come in with this agenda, and you heard the public in the meeting saying, "Let us see the agenda," because we'd already posted it.
Also heard Donna House, or Donna Gale scolded the public for asking a question, saying it wasn't a question and answer session.
Yeah.
So that's how she treats her constituency, and I hate to even call the citizens of London that, because she was appointed by rogue counsel. And I've had some people use that terminology for the meeting last night, they've gone rogue, and they really did. So for people that do not follow politics and meetings and things like that as closely as some of us do, help me explain to them why the accuracy of the minutes and what goes into the record is so important.
Because so many reasons, but here is some of the main highlights. One is for us to go back and validate what was done and who done it, and what was said and who said that, and then the actions of the council. So we go back a lot in this office to refer back to who took this vote, whether it's an open records request, or to check validation if something passed, and then this is historical item. When I'm no longer the mayor, they're no longer the council, people's going to look back to see how this was done, or, you know, how, who approved it, was it fully approved?
And they've tinkered with the minutes.
Oh, they have.
And tried to change history, basically.
And they did it again earlier this year, which is concerning, because myself and the city clerk has to sign that, saying this is true and accurate, and they think because they approve them, that I'm going to sign something that's handwritten, it's unprofessional. They come in, they throw these meetings from September the 5th in front of us, when the clerk had done, now, here's another frustrating part. We spend countless hours preparing for this council meeting. The clerk is preparing all the documents, this, the city clerk and all the clerks in this building, they're putting packets together, they're preparing the agenda, we're sending this out to them.
That's how it's always worked.
Always. All this manpower being spent on these, these meetings to get there, and council all of a sudden changes that up.
Well, I think, in my opinion, I think the council has made it clear that being respons, physically responsible is the very last thing on your, their personal agendas, because of the tens of thousands, it'll be over a hundred thousand, if not two hundred thousand dollars of their personal attorneys, which, they've done it, and it's almost seems like it's nor, that's not normal. Yes, it's legal, but it is not normal for a council to hire their own attorney to deal with a city attorney. I've covered Larry Bryson years, and I've said this in my videos before, I've never seen him treated that way, I've never seen him in a situation to where he could not cut through all the personal feelings and explain things in a professional manner. And last night, trying to watch that meeting, it was hard to understand when he was going about explaining how what they were doing was in clear violation of the sunshine law, because they were yelling over him. They were screaming, you know, yelling and talking over him, talking rude to him, and I've said it before, and I said it to somebody earlier today, that Larry Bryson has been a longstanding member of the community, municipal law specialist, in my opinion, and an upright citizen. The way this council, and I call them the racist council, because they haven't impeached or removed Justin Young, and he's clearly a racist, I'm not asking you to comment on that, but the way that they have handled Larry Bryson tells me everything I need to know about these people.
Yeah, and I think when you start seeing council members, you know, talking about the minutes, wanting to change minutes, which is a historical document, that this is validation that this took place, and this is how it took place, it should be concerning to everybody in the public, whether you like me or not, that should be concerning. And then you have, you know, the city, no matter what you see in these council meetings, this is a very professional city. We don't, you can come in here and look at our records, we don't, the way we format things, the way we want these records to look for, for years. We've got ordinance books in here that's a hundred years old.
Right.
It's going to reflect what's happened here. When you walk in there and you open the minutes book, you're going to see somebody's handwritten in what they wanted into these minutes that I'm not going to sign.
I don't blame you.
I'm not going to sign a handwritten document, but the minutes are very important because it's validation of what took place.
Okay, so moving on, can we talk about the resolution relating to the meeting procedures? Now, in my opinion, the easy way to say it is, I believe the council's trying to control the way the public is allowed to approach them, talk to them, or even be there during a council meeting.
And as in the way they laid out their agenda, one of their biggest concerns was is that we, we were following how we laid out the agenda, and it, they had a numiscible order that told us how to do that. Well, they didn't like that numiscible order, so they tried to come up with this resolution, which I was defuting again, because there is differences between resolution, numiscible orders, and ordinances.
Right.
Resolutions are usually a confirmation of, hey, we agree to this. You don't normally do a resolution for this type of procedure.
No, you can pass the resolution celebrating Veterans Day.
That's what you do.
Yeah.
This is, that's generally how a council acts. So it tells me again that they have very bad legal counsel that does not know numiscible order, um, numiscible law, because if they did, they wouldn't have done a resolution.
Well, I mean, their counsel, their legal counsel, which we're not convinced is even legal at this point, because their contract is expired.
I'm not.
And I'm not either, but has been suspended in Ohio and Kentucky for two years for being a shady attorney. No matter what the legal speak for that is, that's what he was suspended for, and in my opinion, that's just exactly the type that this London City Council wants to go out and hire. It's disgusting to me, but I know you didn't, you know, agree to this, to hear my commentary, but I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, the resolution, though, on the meetings, it's basically demonat, saying how they're going to conduct themselves. They did, they tried to use, last night they condensed it, they did, I can't say that that didn't occur, but they removed a lot of their old past language that allowed people to speak upwards of 20 minutes, the old numiscible order. Okay, well, they changed it, that's fine, but then now they're trying to say, because we gave you a resolution, Mayor, you're going to have to make sure that people that speak out, you give them three war noms, we want them kicked out. Well, you watched like last night, and I kept telling one of the council members, how do I hold them accountable when I've got council members up here, and I, that I'm telling them to quieten down, keep decorum, and they're up here screaming at the public, calling them names, you know, saying rude things to the public, telling them to shut up. I mean, one of the council members was shushing people, then would he start engaging with them again?
And videoing people.
Yeah.
Judd Weaver, you know, I had people message me saying they're tired of being videoed by the council during a meeting, and that's bizarre, that is bizarre behavior.
Kelly said it best last night, at the top of this paper, it says, "Council." It, you know, but they want to try to remove all the powers from me that they can.
Oh, I'm.
I am the chair of this council, so, but Kelly made it plain, it's her meeting, we run this meeting. I know, that's the problem.
She's the gatekeeper to London.
She's the gatekeeper that is, every time they involve themselves, or they're, they're in control of a meeting, you've seen what happened last night, they were trying to control the meeting, and because they were trying to remove the chair and the, the powers of the chair, you know, Judd kept screaming out at people in the public, and then they wanted people to be quiet. He had called point of order, and don't even know what point of order means.
Well, at one point, he said he wasn't a racist, and then right after he said that, he said he was friends with people of color, which is a racist term.
So, yeah, I mean, you know, it goes back to, when you look at these documents, and this was the concern of the three individuals that was representing the city there, when they're contradictory of each other, and, and they contradict each, themselves when you're reading the document, and I was trying to highlight, and then council would get louder, Judd would start screaming louder, because he wanted me to, he wanted to drown out that, and, and I want to tell the public something, this is a time that we do debate. Council is supposed to be engaging and debating the facts, and debating these items, and getting things out to get to where we have a solid, firm document, but every time my side questions the validity of something, or the legality of something, they take and get defensive, and, well, you see what happens, it happened last night, because we were questioning. I want to know where, you know, again, as the mayor, I want to know how you're approving some of the stuff that you're approving, when are you doing it? It wasn't in a meeting since I've been back in office.
Nothing that I've watched.
So it goes back to these resolutions. We, we tried to bring that out last night, that, hey, the resolution, you can't make people have an address when they come in here, signing it maybe to speak, yes, we, but to say you have to show an address, because they do not want anybody speaking that does not live in the city limits of London.
Right.
Mind you, the people that lives in this county, they're impacted by the decisions of this city.
Absolutely, and surrounding areas.
And surrounding areas.
When it comes to economic development and tourism, absolutely.
Absolutely. So that's, that's with that one resolution, that's the main focus.
That's what I thought. So now, what they tried to do to the Tourism Commission, as you mentioned last night, they have been scolded a little bit in the past for trying to tinker with the London Laurel Tourism Commission.
Judd and Kelly both were on the council when this occurred.
And so the action last night regarding the tourism, were they trying to just X out the entire deal?
Yeah, I, well, you seen, we were trying to get clarification, and then we, every time we got rebutted back, would talk to our attorney, Chris Wees, talk to our attorney, Chris Wees. This council, if you look back in the history of the, the meetings this year, it has always been, talk to our attorney, or they would actually let their lawyer that was set with them, which, again, I have nothing against Conrad, had a very difficult job, but he would sit down there, and they would always defer to him to answer the questions. If I am a leader making decisions, I don't have to look at Larry and say, "Larry, I made this decision, but tell them why I made that decision." So it tells me that council's not making decisions in the city limits of London, their lawyers are making the decisions, and they don't even have the reason why, because, again, they're not even coming up with it. They're just, whatever their attorney tells them to do, whether it's Christie Shannon who sued the city.
Right.
Or Chris Wees, so that's why they can't give the public answers, and that's why they start screaming. You start screaming because you're defensive.
Yeah, absolutely. Now, I've witnessed many lively debates. You know, I started covering news shortly after the occupational tax was voted in, so you can imagine.
Oh, yeah.
The lively debates I've witnessed, and I have never seen that. I have never walked away from a Laurel Fiscal Court meeting, Corbin City Commission, London City Council, Williamsburg Council, thinking that was like a Springer episode. Um, it's different, and I'm not throwing that at you, it's them, and they defend the indefensible, and then attack people that have done nothing but their job. I can't wrap my mind around it.
Yeah, and that's it. You know, when we question this resolution, again, it's a resolution, and, you know, the verbiage in it, we were looking for clarification and couldn't get it. That is even more concerning. Council is taking action, but cannot tell the public nor the mayor why they're taking this action. That, if I created, if, we've took ordinances before to the, like the bullying ordinance that they struck down.
Oh, yeah.
I could tell you about that bullying ordinance, because I was involved in that ordinance. This council cannot tell you why any of these resolutions were written, or why any of the verbiage is in there. Matter of fact, on several of them, we heard, and the city clerk heard, say, "Oh, I haven't seen this one." Some of the council members hadn't even seen the documents themselves, but when we come in, Donna Gale House had all the documents, she had this big folder, and she was sitting there, and we knew trouble was coming then, but, you know, we, we knew the agenda was changing before, like probably 30 minutes before we entered, people were saying they've got a different agenda, which was very sad, but she's sitting here with this big, you know, brief of documents, and...
Barking at people like that mean lady on the movie Matilda.
Yeah, so, but she was heavily involved in the creation, so I would direct my questions to her, because, again, transparency to the public, what is this document, why is it contradicting itself, and, you know, then again, Judd would chime in, "You need to talk to Wees."
And then she chimed in and said it was attorney-client privilege.
Absolutely. So saying that they, you know, and again, there's AG opinions on this, that because when they're speaking to their lawyer, that all six of them, she alluded to, all six of them can speak to him, and it was protected, and it was allowed. It's never allowed. Even if three go, and then three go later, that's a series of meetings.
Unless it's an executive session to discuss pending litigation.
Which they would come out in the open.
And then say what action was taken.
Right.
Which they've never done.
They've never done.
So I don't see any, I'm not a legal expert, but I don't see any way that anything Chris Wees has done past the 14th of October is billable to the city or legal.
And that's going to be the question, because, you know, again, his, he had a contract, and it's, this is another frustrating thing, they, they get caught in their, in these messes that they've created since they've tried to impeach me, and we are just trying to help them clean it up, because these records have to be here. It's not that we're trying to say, "Oh, look how, you know, crazy council is," or anything. It's like, we have to hold these records here. The clerk here is responsible for these records, we want them to be accurate. So, again, and then the, we are concerned, because we cannot be writing checks if we do not have contracts. We're going to eventually, Chris Wees is going to have to eventually re, release this big bill, and then when he does, the question becomes, can we pay out from the date of that expiration of that contract? Now, you seen, again, tonight, or last night, council went in there and they backdated city documents.
It's like co-stating a check.
Yeah, is that valid? Can you do that? So there's a lot of questionable things that they're constantly, we're getting into areas that most cities have never been into, we're experiencing things here in London that a lot of mayors I've talked to, and there's other city council, they've never had to endure anything like this.
I know.
So we have a lot of questions, we want to make sure we're doing this right by the people that is doing it, and then they don't even have answers.
No.
So sad.
It's sad, to say the least, so where do we, where do we go from here? I mean, I understand what happened with the manufactured home ordinance, or the, that proposed action. I know they tabled that, and the lady that bought the manufactured home to be next to the mother-in-law is not getting that this year, it's tabled at least until January, which I understand why you wouldn't want to change everything for one person. So that made a little bit of sense, but I've never seen them consider any other thing.
Well, you know, the, the, when it comes to that ordinance, and I agree with you, we should never change anything for one family or one group of anybody, but, you know, council had that ordinance for two weeks.
Right.
And they needed to look in this more, again, that is a political maneuvering.
Kelly Green did not like that ordinance.
She didn't like it, but she wouldn't want to come out and just say it, so she, anytime they table something...
Should have to, should have to, I mean.
Anytime they table something, it's, it's either at a spot, or that it's a political maneuvering. They don't want to have to just up and say, "We don't support this."
Speaking of political maneuvering, I appreciate you, again, for just talking candidly with me. I haven't invited them to, I really don't want to talk to them at this point, but I feel like at this point, everything they do is political maneuvering, and they give a narrative to the public during a meeting, and then they immediately try to gather their posse after the meeting, saying there's more to the story, and wait till this comes out, and wait till this comes out. We've been waiting for years, and none of that has ever came out, and they really need to try a different strategy, because it's a losing one.
Well, you know, I think that, you know, you're right, they, they've said four and a half years, people's going to find out about Wettel, they're going to find out about...
How long have they been trying to find out about Wettel?
Well, I think if you look historically, you know, what's happened in Laurel County, and I think they've done this in other areas, you know, since I have been in office, they've reported me to every agency known to man.
Yes.
They, one, you know, group has consistently called every agency possibly, tried to get me investigated for whatever.
Another group.
But if you look at historically, at what they have done to other men in, that has been in office here...
I'll even save you, I can predict, and this is from my experience as a news person, I know when they, excuse me, I know when they got tired of Dean Johnson, out. I know when they got tired of Mayor Rutter, what happened with him. Other people have said they were ran out of town by this group, so I can't prove any of that, but I know how they attack people when they're gunning for their office, or decided they don't want that person to be in office, and that was one of the things that prompted me into doing some freelance reporting and commentary, is because I can see that come in a mile away, and it just, it made me sick, frankly, that it was happening here. How do you deal with that on a personal level? I know that you're a spiritual man, I know you're a Christian man, but when it comes to that, how do you keep your head up all the time?
Well, you know, here's the thing, and this is something that public needs to remember, and I think we all have said this, we're, you know, let's take me out of the politics and remove that I'm the mayor. We've all said our entire lives growing up here, that we're sick of that good old boy corrupt system. I ran on that. I knew when I won, that I got in office, that it was going to be a challenge, that there is no way the good old boy system was going to let go that, that, just so easily.
Right.
You know, you beat the good old boy in the mayor's election, we got lucky and got some level-headed people in the beginning on council that loved this town, so it kept a certain amount of that council at bay.
Right.
They couldn't go too far, but you've seen what happened over the last year, you know, they were able to get more ahead on the election.
They rooted Holly Little out, Kit Jarvis had to resign.
They bullied Holly Little out.
Because of his heart attack, and he wanted to focus on his family, and then we know what happened with Stacy Benj, she, so, yeah.
Yeah, so you, you look at what happened, they were just in a good place, because the people that was on council, you know, that resigned, wanted to get away from it, and obviously they did, they couldn't handle exactly what I'm going through.
I know.
And so, but this is change, and that's what people need to remember. This is what we said we were going to do, and this is our chance to continue to travail through this, because I truly believe that this council you see now will not be there in 2026. I believe the community has made it plain, and even the media, they don't even want to report what's truly being said or happening.
Oh, I know.
It's just like that meeting, meeting last night, everybody in that building was blasting council, on Facebook, on the comments, you probably had 50 comments against me, there's a thousand against council. People have woke up, and they've seen the truth, and so this is where, where we're at. This is change. This is what we said we were going to come here to do, we're breaking the good old boy club up, this is them last night throwing a tantrum tantrum, that they can't control the scenario, that their good old boy is not in this office because they impeached me, put their good old boy in, the judge overruled them, and they're still throwing tantrum tantrums.
Yeah, their good old girl, the Henley, the, the girl, good old girl Tracy Henley.
And, you know, now they continue, and this is something I questioned last night, how did we get to the appellate court without action of the council? What meeting was that? And it's not me trying to be vindictive or mean, it's me saying, "Hey, there has to be accountability, you cannot spend the people's money without taking action in front of the public." Chris Wees just goes to the, 22 minutes after losing in Williams Court, files a brief in the appellate court.
He didn't just lose, he lost hard.
Hard, and then you, then, he didn't like an order from the appellate court, then he jumps to the Supreme Court. Who approved all this? Who has approved them to spend the money? Now, they did hire Chris Wees as their attorney, but who approved to say, "We are going to appeal this?"
Nobody, nobody. That's how I don't, that's why I don't understand how any of this is legal, and why I hope the Attorney General gets involved, because someone has to police this bunch, because they're not going to police themselves.
And you're right, they're not, but they're not going to stop, because like I said...
No, and I'll tell you another reason they're not, Mayor, and I don't want to interrupt you ever, but when you look at your supporters, and, you know, I stopped by one of your rallies, and I'm, I've openly been a fan of yours, I don't pretend not to be, I don't pretend to be an unbiased reporter, I'm a commentator, a former reporter, and I happen to think you've done a great job, and, but when I stopped by one of your rallies, I didn't get to stay long, but a friend and I stopped by, and you look at the people in attendance of your rallies, you see all different kinds of colors, to use Judd Weaver's favorite word, and you also see a lot of different, you see people from different walks of life, people from all different kinds of socio-economic backgrounds, and I swear, I hate to just try to make it seem simple, but the London City Council can't stand that, they can't stand seeing diversity in London, and I hate to tell them, but that ship has sailed, and the way that they're, in my opinion, protecting a known racist who's used racial slurs, racist comments, and other just ugly talk, and they won't even address him, to me, they must condone it, they must condone it. If I had a friend that was at dinner with me and that whipped that word out, we would no longer have things in common.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't understand how they can want to hold you to account for just doing their job, but they don't want to hold someone like that to account. I couldn't even bring my grandson to the meeting, that's why I didn't cover it in person, because I didn't want him to hear, he's eight years old, and I didn't want him to hear racial slur, I didn't want him to watch people screaming and yelling over each other, talking to a gentleman like Larry Bryson the way they did. So when you have a council that's not suited for work or children, that's bad, and I'm sorry you're up against it.
Yeah, and it's the thing, I don't know how anybody with common sense could look at that, look at current, the currently, what's the climate here and say, you know, it's Wettel anything. If they were such good gatekeepers, why didn't they, they've had all these documents prepared, this agenda for some time, why didn't they send to my office saying, "Mayor, we're not accepting your agenda, this is the way we're going to be proceeding"? They, they could have sent it over the weekend to the city clerk to have it distributed out to the public, to let the public know. The public was so mad last night.
Oh, I know.
Because of what council did, that last minute, "Ha ha, we doing this because we can." Nobody really cares about your powers that you have for the 30 minutes to an hour that you're sitting in that office, it's, you're insignificant. At the end of the day, we are getting big things done in London.
Without them.
Without these people, and I think they can't stand it. These road projects, we don't need them, it's, you know, we don't need them. They, they, but they cannot stand that they don't have the control. London is moving forward without this council, and we're going to continue to move forward because of the staff that is in place in City Hall, Street Department, you know, sanitation, police, fire, every, we're going to continue moving.
Imagine what you could get done if you actually had a council that worked with you.
We would be doing leaps and bounds.
I'm saying, I'm saying.
But, you know, the city's not stopped moving forward, and that's the thing, even though council is doing things that I feel like are unethical, the legality is questionable, you know, there's a lot of questionable things surrounding the things that they do, but I do believe that this, another year of this, and then London can finally move beyond the good old boy system, because if you just watch social media and you watch, I'm out here in the public every day.
I know it.
They're politically dead, people's done with this.
They're not good old boys, they're mean, they're mean.
They're vile. Well, they've become vile because the tantrums no longer got any attention, now they have to become violent and name-calling to eat, not just me and Larry, mind you, to the public.
Oh, I know.
It, it's absurd what I'm hearing come out of them council members' mouths, to residents, city residents.
We heard it last night during the meeting, and, you know, that's the thing, this is not your, this is not our synopsis of the meeting, it's online, it's available for anybody to see.
Go watch it.
If anybody has any... If anybody has any idea or any notion that the council acted in any way professional last night, just watch the meeting. Speaking of the meeting, do you know if any of the actions and the problems are going to be forwarded to the attorney general's office?
Uh, yeah, I think there's a lot of people that's already sent the attorney general the entire video.
I think so too.
Yeah, and you know, and let me say, you, the attorney general's hands are, are tied in a lot of ways too. Russell Coleman has been really good to this office in a lot of ways. Um, you know, so we'll.
In a lot of ways, they're not tied, you know, too.
Well, yeah, there, you're right, but there, you have to take all the KRSs uh, that are involved with the decisions that they have to make as an attorney general. And I think that it becomes down to, and when you really read the opinions he's sending back on some of this stuff. I can't say that I disagree with some of it, but is some of it political? Yeah, sure, he's a politician. And when you start getting involved in these types of messes.
Right.
I mean, there's that element that they, that's there, but I think that there, there is a valid concern too that you make, you're, you're in Frankfurt, you don't have the pulse on this and somebody's sending you something and they're, they're making these claims. But so how do they make sure that this is factual?
Well, it's, right. And you know, it's, it's like some of the television media, I'm not going to put them down, but I could tell one report that they watched maybe the first two minutes of the meeting and did a full-blown report on it. That's laughable. That's absolutely laughable, but I see it all the time. And that's another thing that, another reason I'm really glad that you talked to me today. Is there anything else that you would like to add while we're here? I don't get up here often.
Yeah, you know, at the end of the day though, there, last night was probably one of the worst meetings. Uh, I think that it was a major concern, uh, shows the councils, which people's already seen it, but it really shows you they, they have no regard for the citizens of London. So I, I, I wish and I hope that, you know, the AG would consider uh, or to look into if it's filed, the ousta, uh, to oust them, uh, or remove some of them. Uh, I would have loved to send a special election so the people's voices could have been restored.
Yes.
And we don't have six individuals that do not care about London. Because even if you hated me, why would you want such chaos in your city? Why would you want to constantly, look at every.
Because they've been used to saying that's not what's happening.
What, what part of this agenda benefited the city of London? Every bit of this, attack Randall Weddle, attack Randall Weddle, attack Randall Weddle, attack Randall. Every single resolution, every ordinance, attack Randall Weddle.
That's all it was about.
Eleven months, attack Randall Weddle. At what point do you cross a line that you are now negligence of duty and misconduct?
I wish I was the AG because I would have already had them out.
Yeah.
But I'm not.
So I think if people dissect this uh, agenda a little bit better, they'll see this is nothing to benefit the citizens. It's a big agenda and every bit of it is to let us see if we can destroy Randall Weddle.
Stroke the egos of the sweater vest club.
That's it.
That's it. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, you're always professional. I'm always not so much, but it's always very nice talking to you.
You too. Thank you.
Have a good one.
You too.